it is not. He's got about half of it done, so right now, it's still heavily in violation.[608.12-609.62][S02] Wait, wait just a second.[609.62-614.52][S02] We've already had a public hearing, but I am interested in what you have to say, so[614.66-621.22][S02] if you'll give your name and address to Ms. Salter, we'll give you an opportunity to
speak for a couple of minutes.[633.72-639.62][S02] And editorially, I'll say the young man was one of the more entertaining individuals[640.27-643.12][S02] we've had in my five years on the City Council.[647.12-651.41][S02] Somebody needs to keep the promises he made, so go.[651.41-653.12][S02] We'll let you have the microphone.[653.12-654.83][S19] These are the pictures that I took.[654.83-655.83][S02] Your name.[655.83-656.83][S19] Here.[656.83-657.83][S19] Care to look at them?[657.83-658.83][S21] Real quick.[658.83-668.12][S21] A little more progress was made from when you took these.[669.72-670.72][S02] Start with your name.[670.72-672.62][S21] My name is John Mark Reeves and I apologize about this being an issue.
I initially planned to sell this to the tenant I was previously living there and that all fell through, so it went a couple of years that he was carrying up all the maintenance and that he didn't do a very good job of it. Once it got back in my hands, honestly, I didn't do a great job either, but that's the reason it got out of control. So now that we're getting it in control, we'll definitely have it in better shape. Won't have this issue again. In the short time when the tenants told me about this issue, I called Gray's Tree Service, which is one of the more reliable companies, and they said they'd be out, told them it was urgent. They said they'd be out within three weeks to get taken care of and somehow they dropped the ball. I've been with the owner with Gil Gray, one of the principals. He apologized. It was around the time when he was having a heart surgery that kind of had him out of the office for a little while, but they dropped the ball and they were supposed to get it done. They were telling me they're gonna get it done. It came down to the last hour, which was, I found about last week, they weren't gonna be able to get it done, so I scrambled to try to find somebody else. We both were out there all day today cleaning it up. Rain came, we took a break. Soon as the rain let up, we got back out there, we tried to clean it, clean it up some more and we did make some more progress. When were you out here taking these?
Probably around noon and no one was there.
That's right.
And then I went back out there about 5:00 or 7:00 and no one was there.
That's correct. I came back to, I guess you could tell a little bit of progress has been made between noon and 5:00.
No, good. You said there was and there was.
There was a little bit, but that's, I mean, I understand it, you know, whatever course action it'll take. I'm apologetic for not having to take action. We were hoping to get things done with Gray's, but they wound up not working out for us and we tried to do the best we could. And then, of course, it wasn't pretty great storming it.
Well, our desire would be for your monies and effort to solve this on one end, but then on the other side, we can't continually carry this over. My thoughts would be, let's carry it over one more time. Let me emphasize those three words, one more time.
Sure.
And you'll come out ahead if you'll go ahead and address this yourself.
I understand.
So we'll carry this over.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes.
I disagree. I think we need to declare this a public nuisance. This property's been a problem for a long time and if he's truly interested in cleaning up the property, you know, it's raining, our crews are behind, he'll have it cleaned before our crews get there.
When would you put the sign out?
Sorry, what?
Like, if you posted it, when would you post it?
Oh, this property's already been posted.
Oh, it's already been posted.
That's the first day.
Right, but when they, when you declared a nuisance, how long before the?
You go the next day.
Oh, okay.
But like Mr. Lang said, he's still got the right to own property, his own property, do his own cleaning.
Yeah.
Up until we set foot on it, too.
Okay. Got it.
But I don't know what that timeframe is, the street department doesn't know what they can do.
And I don't have an issue if the street department, it takes a couple of days to make it over there, but I don't see any reason why we should delay this another two weeks at least.
It'd be three weeks, actually.
Three weeks, and they've had ample time.
I would actually agree with Mr. Thomas that it's not necessary to give it to the next. If you would just have a couple of days before you schedule the cleaning crew to come by, then we will have it cleaned up to the point that your crews will not have anything to do when they get there.
This is all the laws and the degree plan they're going with.
Yes, sir.
I assume that's a motion, Mr. Thames?
It is.
And that's a second from Mr. Waltney. All in favor, signify by say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that is declared conditionally. I mean, it's declared, but you literally have a couple of days to do something about that, so thank you. That would be 17150. Okay? Thank you. All right, we move on to public hearings tonight. 040717, public hearing set for July 24th for a variance to the sign ordinance at 500 Woodcrest Place, requested by Kim Wakefield, Greg Cobb, our BEZ Department. We'll begin with a report from Special Issues.
Well, the problem is, we voted to drop this in committee, but the public hearing had already been scheduled, so the motion to drop was made by Mr. McCloskey and seconded by Ms. Anderson, passed five to zero, so technically the item is dropped, but we have to open and close the public hearing.
We do. So this public hearing is open. Is there anyone to speak to this matter? If there is not, this public hearing is closed. So what is, the motion you said is to drop?
To drop.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second from Mr. Thames. All in favor, well, it's a drop. All in favor, signify by say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, there we go. 050717, public hearing set for July 24th, 2017 for a variance to the sign ordinance at 1820 28th Avenue South, requested by Diane Foley, Greg Cobb, our BEZ Department. We'll begin with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith.
Yes, the Special Issues Committee met last Monday, voted five to zero to send this item out to full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Ms. Andres, seconded by Mr. Waltney.
All right.
And voted five to zero.
Good. All right, thank you. We will begin by opening this public hearing and start with Mr. Cobb.
Yes, sir. They resubmitted another set of drawings and they are in compliance, so I would ask that we drop this also.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this? There being none, we will close this public hearing and welcome a motion for dropping and a second.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Andres, second from Mr. Waltney. All in favor, signify by say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There being none, that is dropped. 060717, public hearing set for tonight for a variance to the sign ordinance at 234 Greens Springs Highway, requested by Diane Foley or Greg Cobb, our BEZ Department. A report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Again, we met last week, voted five to zero to send this out to full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Mr. Waltney, seconded by Ms. Andres, and again, five to zero with no recommendation pending the public hearing.
All right, thank you. We will open this public hearing and who is speaking to this matter?
Matthew McBride, Scott Services Company.
Okay. Go.
Y'all remember, this is Harbor Freight we talked about last week in committee?
Sure.
And they have a sign on the front and on rear of the building, the same as the Dollar General did, and it's a size variance and a secondary attached sign is what the two variances are.
All right, so this is identical to what we looked at last week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Anything else?
It's same thing we talked about last week.
I understand.
Looking for the same sign on the back and then a size ordinance on the front.
Was this the one that had the two different versions? One was slightly smaller and the other one?
Yes, we were going for the smaller one. Yes, ma'am.
We are going with the smaller one. That's what we're proposing.
Would you like a copy?
No, I haven't. That's our memory.
Anybody need a copy?
If you have one for that.
I do. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I. Close the, well, you, is this?
No, we haven't closed the public hearing.
Okay, so I'll wait.
If there are no other questions, you are welcome to have a seat. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? If there is not, we will close this public hearing. Mr. Higginbotham?
How did you know? You missed chairman. I guess my question, I understand the size variance on the front sign, but the secondary sign on the back of the building, what is the hardship that we're remedying by putting a second sign on the back of the building?
It's just visibility currently from the interstate. Currently, there's all the other businesses in that shopping center has that sign and there's no visibility from the front to the back, so it gives us interstate visibility at that point.
Mr. Chairman, are we taking this up as two separate motions or can we do that, please? We can't do that? We can't separate the two variances?
No, we really can. I mean.
It's just one, it's one item.
It's one item.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? There being none, we have a motion from Special Issues.
No, actually, we didn't. We made a motion.
Oh, you sent it out without?
No recommendation, right, 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 right.
Chair would welcome a motion.
I would actually move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Thames. All in favor, please signify by say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so this is passed six to one and this is Resolution 17116. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to 020717, which is a request for consideration to add a no-through traffic or local traffic only sign on the Oxmore end of Overton Road, requested by John Holly and Barry Smith. Do we have a report from Public Safety?
We do.
Mr. Wyatt is gonna give us a report from Public Safety.
We do now. What is it? It's 020717.
Public Safety Committee met on 7/17/17 and voted four to zero to recommend to full council installing on the Oxmore end of Overton Road a local traffic only sign that our traffic department can handle in-house. The motion was, the motion to approve was made by myself and seconded by Ms. Andres.
All right, good. My understanding, Mr. Kendrick, there's no reason for a resolution on this item?
No ordinance required unless you're gonna decide.
Okay.
It's just citation.
No problem. So therefore, all in favor, signify by say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. We'll move on to 100717, public hearing set for tonight, consideration of a sign, variance to a sign ordinance at 1745 Oxmore Road, requested by Ryan Stewart and Greg Cobb, our BEZ Department. We'll begin with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith.
Yes, met last week, voted five to zero to send this item out to full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Mr. Waltney, seconded by Mr. Higginbotham, five to zero, no recommendation.
Thank you. We'll open this public hearing. Mr. Cobb?
This is a height variance only. The area is fine. The height allowed is three and a half feet. This is five, so it's a variance of a foot and a half is all it is, no area.
It's actually, it's five and a half. Five and a half? Five and a half, yeah.
Okay, I missed it.
It's five and a half feet.
All right, thank you.
And there's no lights? It's just a painted sign?
It is just a painted sign. I think if it had any lights, it would just be.
Down below, like, yeah.
And as a reminder, if you'll, tell me your name.
Yes, Ryan Stewart.
I'm sorry, speak in the microphone.
Sure.
Ryan Stewart.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Stewart? On the council's part, okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
There might be other people.
I understand, no, no problem. And by the way, if there's anyone else who would like to speak to this matter, please sign in over here with Ms. Salter.
Right here.
She's got a.
You have to sign over here.
We always want to know which citizens are with us and what they have to say.
Okay, the first, I guess the first question I have.
And again, into the mic. You are?
Sandy Eichelberger. I reside at 500 Mayfair Circle.
Okay.
This is my back fence. Y'all probably have this photo yourself, that is wooden right here, so it's very, very close to my property. It's gonna be visible over the fence and I just don't know, my question is, what is his hardship to have a sign this large? And another point I want to bring out, it's very, very difficult to pull out from Mayfair Circle owned to Oxmore and this could be a possible blockage of view there. I just don't think it's necessary to have a sign this large, but I'd like to hear his hardship for that, 'cause I know he's really supposed to have one to make a variance. So can y'all speak to that?
Well, he would need to speak to that.
Yeah, we'll need Mr. Stewart to come back up and address that, but while he's on his way, just from my information, how tall is your fence?
Well, it's graduated. It's about four and a half feet tall.
Okay, so the sign may be slightly taller.
It's gonna be.
No, I mean, but if it's five and a half feet, then it's a foot taller. Okay.
Because it's on a little raised garden.
I understand.
Where it is, so that raises it up probably about another foot, foot and a half.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
First, I've got, I've got pictures if anyone needs to see that.
We don't need those.
Okay, the property does have a couple of issues in terms of visibility, which the sign is intended to address. First, the property slopes down from the street downhill, and so the sign is situated a good three feet off and down from the sidewalk, which is adjacent to the street. In addition, the building sets, is set at the back of the property, again downhill, and so there's really no visibility in terms of trying to put a sign on the building, so really, we're limited to a street sign. The sign is set, again, several feet from the road and it does not provide any, it does does not create any visibility issues when you're, as far as traffic coming or going in either east or west on Oxmore.
Well, I would say this, certainly our preference as a council is monument signs as opposed to anything that's, that's higher or larger than that. I can't say that I've been over there to look to see what a five and a half foot sign would be.
Well, it's hard to tell, because there's nothing there right now, so it's hard to know what it's going to look like, because it's just, there's not, there used to be a sign there for the, you want to, because I talked to Greg about this earlier, and he actually.
It was with the yellow.
Yes, right. Terrain, he, according to Mr. Greg.
You can see the picture of the sidewalk here that drops about a foot to the planted bed, but there was law sign there for years. That's what was in there for, was, I think, maybe three attorneys, two or three, that had a sign there.
But again.
Everyone actually wrote that law.
Their sign was within compliance of the guidelines.
Their sign wasn't five and a half feet, was it?
No, absolutely.
I understand, ma'am. I'm only looking at Mr. Cobb because that's his daily.
I don't have the dimensions of the old sign with me.
I understand.
I can sort of find them from the records of when it was put in, but I don't, I don't recall.
Okay, ma'am, I certainly take your word. I don't want you to think I'm questioning that.
And I did specifically ask Mr. Cobb about the height, I mean, the sightline issue, because I know that that was brought up in the meeting on Monday, and he has been out there, and he doesn't think that it will cause a sightline problem in terms of traffic or pulling out from Mayfair Circle. Now, I don't, I mean, that's, you know, I'm depending on him, but is there any way to make the oval part just a little smaller? I mean, is that possible? I mean, the rounded part?
Well, here's the point, as I'm looking at it, Ms. Smith, and I get your point. What if there's no green between the phone number and the bottom of the circle? You see, if it's.
And just drop it down?
If it's dropped, then that gets some amount, because I know that's at least six inches.
He's going for two and a half feet. That's a lot.
Two feet.
Two feet.
Two feet.
I mean, I really think you need to.
Again, I don't mean to correct you, ma'am, but.
Address these neighbors, and I'm speaking for the Mayfair Circle Association, also with your hardship of why it needs to be this big. It could be longways with the same information, the circle owned one in, and then that like that, and you don't have to put it in the box, you could plant some flowers, put it right here.
Well, one of the other issues in turn that creates a visibility issue, and the reason we needed a little additional height, is actually the height of some of the landscaping at the neighborhood entrance. There are two trees in particular that are, that are tall, and if you're coming west, and because there's, it's in a curve, you cannot see anything because of the height of the landscaping at the, at the neighborhood entrance.
Well, I understand. By the way, it's unusual for us to have a public hearing and have this interchange between two individuals, just because that's not the way it's, it's laid out to be. But your question's important, and it should be answered. Thank you, all three. I think there's others that would like to speak to this. Anything else? I know you didn't hear everything you wanted to hear, and I understand that. Thank you very much. Is there someone else who wants to speak to this item? Would you please sign in over here with Ms. Salter? Your name and address. And by the way, if there's anyone else who would like to speak to this item, please make your way forward and go ahead and sign in as well, for the sake of time. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm late. I looked at the agenda.
No problem.
We were down.
We're moving rather quickly tonight.
I'm sorry?
We're moving rather quickly tonight, so.
Good. I'm Nancy Farrell, and I'm president of the Mayfair Homeowners Association, and I live at five sixteen Mayfair Circle. And my concern is the site, leaving Mayfair Drive, or Circle, and entering onto Oxmore. I know that Greg Cobb did a site plan or line or something, I'm not familiar with all that, but I know when I pull up, the cars on Oxmore are going fast, and we have to look both ways, and I am concerned about, and I've kind of looked at it and eyeballed it, but I'm not sure.
I understand.
And until it gets up, I guess, we're not sure. I don't know, I don't understand why we have to go four feet over what the allowable size is.
It's not four, it's just two.
And again, it's not our intent to.
It's two.
Correct you, but it is two feet over.
Yeah, it's two feet. It was, our ordinance allows for three and a half, and this is going to be five and a half.
Okay, well, in your email.
Yeah, I did, I thought it was, but I was, again, I was trying to recall from a meeting on Monday, but it's, it's two.
Okay, well, I'm going by.
No, I understand.
That.
I understand.
And therefore, I am concerned. And, and you know, as you leave Mayfair and you drive toward the Piggly Wiggly, there are signs for businesses all along the way.
Sure.
If we start getting larger and larger, we've opened up the door for bigger and bigger signs, and I don't think that's what Homewood is looking for. I think we want the boutique or smaller signs like what we have allowed. So that is probably the two concerns that I have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Farrell, I appreciate it.
Genevieve Ward, I'm the owner of Studio G Pilates. Our primary reason, we've been in Homewood with our business for eight years, and we are expanding, and the primary reason we chose this location was because the increase in visibility that we would get from Oxmore Road, and as some of the things we've discussed about the sloping, and then the fact that the building itself is several feet beyond the road, to put a sign on the building hurts, it doesn't accomplish our objective to let people know what we're doing. That was the primary, because it is, it's relatively progressive for Homewood, and so we'd like to put that concept out there and have people be able to drive by and spot that and recognize that, and we're just afraid that our investment in renting the property for five years, if it's not, if we don't have a clear sign that really displays what we're doing, and it's somewhat, that people can drive past that road and circle around and totally miss it, because I didn't even see the for lease sign that was on the building for several months, I didn't even see it, because it was hidden behind bushes, and it just never crossed my visibility. So we've, we've gone back and forth several times, we've been trying to work with creating something that could be reasonable. So I think the old, old, the old ordinance was, I think, six feet high, and so the sign next to us with State Farm is very high. Ours is significantly lower, and we're trying to kind of come in between what, what the new ordinance was, so I just wanted to let people know that was the intention behind why we designed the sign the way we did, and create a monument sign, and try to increase the visibility so people would recognize it.
Okay, let me pose a question. If the sign was four and a half feet instead of five and a half feet, and the variance was only a foot, is that something that might could be workable from y'all's side?
I want to say yes, but it's not, it's, it's not, it's not, when you compare it to the other signs that surround it, it's very minimal, and that was the main, I'm just being, that was the main attraction for us, and we're this close to signing the lease, we just needed to get through this step, and I feel like it would definitely hurt us to have a smaller sign. That was the main attraction, was the visibility that we would be able to get from Oxmore. So I am concerned about it kind of shrinking and not being seen.
Well, again, I understand your concern, but I also understand the visibility issue, and you see multiple council members nodding their head. I think four and a half feet would be less of a visibility issue.
Can I, can I say something?
Miss Smith?
Quickly. I'm not a designer, but I work with a lot of really good designers. You could take that sign, and instead of it being so up and down, make it a little bit more horizontal, keep the same, you know, keep width, but take down the height a little bit, and I think you could still accomplish what you're trying to accomplish, and maybe avoid all the this. I think there's a way to do that, and keep it, and still being able to have the big phone number and your big logo, so that it's visible from the street, but without having to deal with the variance. I mean, yeah, again, I'm not a designer, but I think that, I think that could work, I really do. I think it could happen, because it's only two feet, and I think you'd find that if you stretched it a little bit, what, what's the width allowable?
Or width?
What's?
Be, any width it needs to be. The only limitation is the square footage of the sign.
Square footage, right.
The sign is allowed twenty-five square feet, this is twenty-two and a half, so they came within our sign's limitation.
Right, so there's room to go this way.
Yes, ma'am.
That would not cause any variance issue.
And the difference is with the sign's height changes, as you see it down Oxmore due to the width of the lot, that's what it's based off of.
Right.
And so some of the taller signs, or bigger signs.
Are on bigger lots.
Yeah, the next size up is six feet.
Yeah.
And that's because of the width of the road frontage.
Right. So that's, so the reason theirs is smaller is because their lot is thinner.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, got it.
All right, yes, ma'am, if it can be short, normally one person. Okay.
I just wanted to point out on this sign, it is very attractive, and I understand that they want to get their message across.
Sure.
Because this is sort of a new concept, I don't know. But as you're driving, you are not going to be able to read these three lines on the sign under here. There's no way you can watch what you're doing on Oxmore Road as much traffic as there is. So if they deleted those three lines, perhaps, you know, the sign could come down, because unless you're walking, you're not going to be able to read them.
All right, thank you. I tend to agree. One of the things they teach you in marketing about billboards is past about seven letters.
Yeah.
It really, they really can't be read, but I don't think the council's responsibility is to tell someone how to design their particular board. Again, forgive my continual comments about this, but I think four and a half feet would, would accomplish something for both. Again, y'all wouldn't have everything you wanted, the neighborhood would still have the sign, but I think it would, the chair would certainly welcome a motion for a modified approval of this, or an approval of this, whatever, what is y'all's?
Anytime a neighborhood comes out.
Well, yeah, let me call, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else? My fault. Okay, public hearing's closed.
I just have to take into consideration the neighborhood, the neighbors, the residents that live in the neighborhood that are going to be directly affected by this. That's who I'm.
Well, I understand.
I agree with you, Mr. President, that I, I think that there's probably room for a compromise in here, somewhere between what it's currently designed for, and maybe even the limits of the ordinance, but I'm also concerned about the residents here and that size sign on this lot.
Ms. Smith, any comments?
I would agree. I mean, I think, I think there's definitely room for a modified sign that would meet the ordinance and still accomplish what the business owner needs it to do, because, which is draw attention to the business and get people in her parking lot. I just think, I think there's, there's a way that it can be done that's going to meet the ordinance's requirements.
All right, anyone on this side of the dice?
Would they not have to make that proffer?
Well, you're right, there's, there's a couple of ways to do this. We could, we could do a modified motion, or we could send it back to the.
Committee.
Committee, and look at another option. I'm just trying to be sensitive to business folks.
I, I think it probably would need to go back to committee, just so that we could work with them to make sure it got done the way we wanted it to get done, or that they needed it to get it done and everything.
All right, well, we, we will send this back to Special, yes?
Unless the applicant would like to proffer something while we're here.
Well, that, that is also.
It wouldn't necessarily have to go back to committee.
That is true.
And then back out to council.
That is true.
We're back to the four and a half feet, folks.
But if not, then I said we need to send it back to.
Tell me what I need to do, or say.
I say that all the time.
Well, you know, again, we have council members who are reasonably comfortable with the four and a half feet.
Okay.
I think if you would, would, I mean, I think that is going to make, I think a compromise in this particular situation is going to be more acceptable than trying to, you know.
Okay, well, yeah, we would, we could have the sign modified, too.
It's supposed to be fifty-four inches high.
Four and a, is that four, four and a half feet? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
That's fifty-four inches.
And I guess what we would need to do is we'd need to make the motion contingent on seeing some.
Revised drawings?
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Mr. President, can I ask, that is acceptable to the Mayfair residents, the Mayfair Circle residents? Would that be, is that something acceptable to y'all?
I can't understand what you're saying.
All right, we'll come forward.
They're, they're trying, they're going to make an offer to make the sign a foot shorter, so that it will only be one foot over what the allowable height is.
I think it's an attractive sign. I just want to be sure that we can see what we pull out.
Right.
That is my main concern.
Well, and Greg had already said that that was not going to be a problem. I mean, he's an engineer, so he, I know he knows better than me. I mean, I, I mean, I'm just taking his advice, because he's the professional and the expert that knows these things.
All right, so do we have that motion?
So moved.
Oh, oh, you moved. You moved, moved from down there. You've got motions from down there.
Motion for Mr. Thames, second for Mr. Waltney, is that correct?
Sure.
Yeah, that works.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All right.
And so we will just need to see those revised.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. That is Resolution, hold on, one seventeen, seventeen one seventeen, okay? All right, thirteen oh-seven seventeen, request to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract within time staffing for the contract labor work in the city. Mayor McBrer, report from Finance.
Yes, the Finance Committee met last Monday, voted four to zero to recommend approving this item after a presentation from the mayor. Motion was made by Mr. Wright, seconded by Mr. Thames, and again, that was four to zero to approve the signing of the contract.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Waltney. Any further comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is seventeen one eighteen. All right, twenty-two oh-six seventeen, request for consideration, I'm sorry.
I've got that as seventeen one nineteen. You are correct.
You are correct, okay.
Previous item, the sign variance was seventeen one eighteen.
I am sorry, thank you for keeping me straight. Where is one seventeen?
Was it?
Number one seventeen.
The sign?
The sign, this, Great Springs, twelve oh-five seventeen.
How about a seventeen one sixteen?
All right. Yes, we've got a little confusion. Thirty-two oh-six seventeen is one fifteen.
Correct.
Twelve oh-five seventeen is one fourteen. Oh-six oh-seven seventeen is one sixteen. So that would make ten oh-seven seventeen one seventeen.
That's true.
And this one, one eighteen.
So the Ox, the Oxmore doesn't need a number? That wasn't a resolution?
Oh, the, the, Overton Road, no, that was not a resolution.
My bad.
No problem.
I agree with you, Adam.
Okay, twenty-two oh-six seventeen, request for consideration to work in the public right-of-way at twelve fifty Columbiana Road. Sandy Owens, Greg Cobb, BEZ Department, report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith?
Yes, we actually had a special called, Special Issues Meeting, at five-thirty prior to this council meeting, about twenty-two oh-six seventeen. We made, we made a motion, sorry, voted four to zero to send this out to the committee approving the right-of-way work with the proper indemnification agreements, and then also the monument sign, which is just approval of a number of signs on the property.
All right, we have a motion from Special, Special Issues, do we have a second?
Sorry.
Second from Mr. White. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimously approved. Thank you very much, okay?
Thank you.
No problem. Now we move on to oh-two oh-six seventeen, request for consideration of an ABC oh-seven zero, retail table wine, off-premises only license for quality wines, LLC doing business as Classic Wine Company located at eighteen thirty-one Twenty-Eighth Avenue South, Suite N one-ten, City Clerk, and we would appreciate a report from Public Safety.
Mr. White, this one actually was carried over in Public Safety, but they are needing this to me tonight, and I, I'm not sure about the procedure to get it off, can he just, because it's carried over in committee?
It was carried over in committee, and I don't, I don't know if we have gotten the information that we need or not, I don't know.
We did get.
Mr. Cobb's going to help us on that. Mr. Cobb?
I didn't want to interrupt you. Our Fire Marshal Nick Hill sent out an email late this afternoon, and y'all may have known I've had time to read it. They went over and did the fire inspection on the alarm system and everything, he said all life safety issues are good. I can read it to you if you like, it's about five sentences.
Five sentences you can read.
Attached is ABC letter for classic wine. Mr. Pew is given a temporary cert certificate of occupation, allowing him to move inventory and furniture into the suite. This does not allow them to open for business, however, expect the work to be complete tomorrow, July twenty-fifth, in order to not delay the ABC licensure any further. The life safety issues have been addressed, and the space is safe for employees and inventory. Should you have any questions, do not hesitate to call Nick Hill, Fire Marshal.
Okay.
So he's, they got it all together today.
So we have approval from fire?
Yes.
Do we already have an approval from police?
Yes, sir, we had that first.
Okay, so there are no other approvals to get. That being the case, Chair would welcome, since we don't really have a motion from Public Safety since it was carried over, Chair would welcome a motion and second.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. White, second from Mr. Waltney. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved. All right, thank you. We'll move on to committee referral. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of the committee referral agenda.
So moved, Mr. Kendrick?
Motion for Ms. Andrews, second.
Hold on.
Wait, 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 Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir, one of the items on the committee referral is eighteen oh-seven seventeen.
Yes, sir, one of the items on the committee referral is 180717, that item has to go to the planning commission in order for you properly to consider it. Their meeting is scheduled August the 1st, and for timing purposes only, I'd sent you an ordinance that's simply incorporating the previous maximum building height, excuse me, minimum living area dwelling that was deleted out of the, of the previous ordinance at the recommendation of the planning commission. It would be helpful if we could refer this to the planning commission, you take no action, you can't take any action until you get the report, and at your next meeting, you'll likely have their report, and then you can consider that as you see fit in, in the committee. So, in addition to it being on the referral, I would also recommend that you refer it specifically to the planning commission so we could move along with that legal process.
Yes, so what we're doing is approving the committee referral with the modification that we're sending this to planning commission. Is that so moved? And second by Mr. Higginbotham. Motion by Ms. Andrews, second by Mr. Higginbotham. All right, any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, sir.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is approved, we'll move on to other business. And, let's see, 200717, request to set a public hearing for consideration of offense variance at 2920 Leland Drive. Jacob Schuler, Vanessa McGrath with our BEZ Department, and we will set that public hearing for August 14th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. 210717, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 1500 Wellington Road a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth, requested by Scott Cook, our Code Enforcement Police Department. We will also set that one for August 14th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. Next is 220717, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 1620 26th Avenue South, public nuisance due to a violation of ordinance 1910 and 1750 excessive growth, requested by Scott Code, our Code Enforcement Police Department. And again, we will set that one for August 14th at 2017, at 6:00 p.m. Lastly, for public hearing settings is 230717, request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 1632 25th Terrace South, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth, also requested by Scott Cook, our Code Enforcement and Police Department. We will set that public hearing also for August 14th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. Last on the agenda, 240717, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of July 10th, 2017, through July 23rd, 2017, requested by our City Treasurer, Finance Committee, report from Counselor Smith.
Yes, I had the pleasure of reviewing the invoices, and after Ms. Salter got all my questions answered, I would move that we approve those vouchers.
All right, we have a motion for Ms. Smith, a second from Mr. Higginbotham. Any further comments or questions? If there are none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is Resolution 17120. All right, we come to the time in our meeting when we welcome comments from our council members, and we always start with you, Mr. Waltney.
Going to be a man of few words this evening, so I have nothing to add.
Thank you, Mr. Thames.
I would set P and D for 5:00.
Now, this is on August 7th.
Are we not?
We're not meeting on August 31st.
Next Monday is July 31st.
There's a 5th Monday.
Oh, okay. August 7th, 5:00.
Okay, how long do you need?
We will have a presentation that evening, so, you know, at least 30 minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham.
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Smith?
I guess I'm setting finance and special issues again.
You are.
So-
Since you are Chair of one, I assume that one comes before finance?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Special issues at 5:30, and I think it looks like I have a pretty small agenda, we have a lot of carried over things, but I think it'll be fine, so I'm going to say 15 minutes for special issues, and then I'll set finance for 5:45, and he had a few things, so I'll, just to be safe, I'll say 30 minutes on him, so 6:15.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Uh, no.
Mr. White?
Uh, nothing unless, Ms. Salter, do I need to be setting Public Safety? I know we carried, had one other issue that we carried over from last time.
Do you want to go ahead and set it, and then if Mr. McCluskey decides we don't need to, we can cancel it?
I'm sorry, what'd you land on?
Six, I ended finance at 6:15.
Okay, so we'll set Public Safety for 6:15 unless Mr. McCluskey-
In 30 minutes.
...the rules.
I mean, 15 minutes, so 6, 6:30. Do we have a Public Works item? Let me just ask, while you look at that, Ms. Andrews?
I wanted to congratulate Coach Tom Esslinger at the high school for being named the 2017 National High School Girls Track and Field Coach of the Year.
Which was excellent.
Congratulations, Coach E.
And there is no, there's no items on there for-
So, so the last meeting will be at 6:15.
I, I don't see anything going on this time, I think we may have had one thing that was carried over, but I didn't bring the minutes with me.
Well, you want to tentatively set it for 6:30 and then-
Do we, is Public Safety, is that with 6:15? Is that what y'all set it for?
So, we, Public Works is 6:30?
6:30.
And we can cancel it then if we don't need to.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor.
Nothing to deny.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I have nothing either, and since we won't gather together for two weeks for committee meetings, and three weeks for a council meeting, I wish everyone the best the next few weeks, and with that, we adjourn. Thank you.
On that one, I took off the meeting, but I did mention Public Safety, because I just don't want to address that item, it was still sitting carried over, just saying it off like that.